Please rise for a moment. Gladly to be here. United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation, united in this world, with liberty and justice for all.
This is a regular meeting of the Towns of Council Board of Adjustment pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act. The public is hereby notified at adequate notice as defined by the act as provided, and then a notice and a meeting schedule will be provided.
There's an echo coming back. It's very hard to hear.
It's because of these monitors. The monitors were left on, and there is an echoing. I can't do anything about it. It's IT has to shut them off. I don't know how to shut them off.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson.
That's the drums.
We're always watching.
Published today as reported for us on December 10, 2023, and published in the Star Ledger on December 9, 2023. And a copy of said notice was filed by the clerk of Tom Zerber and posted by him, and now we roll call members.
Mr. Christian?
Here.
Mr. Biggs is not present. Mr. Colucci?
Here.
Mr. Mollin?
Here.
Mr. Bianchi is not present. Mr. Fontana is not present. Mr. Luthman?
Here.
Mr. Erd?
Yes.
Mr. Stella?
Yes.
And Mr. Presinsky?
Here.
In addition, we have present tonight our Board Attorney Christopher Dast, the Esquire of Wolfburg with Dast and Steiger. Our Board Engineer is not Ernie Peters, this is Miss Panvilla, P.E. of Redington and Vernic Engineers Incorporated. Our Board Planner Stuart Weiser, P.E. of A.R.H. Associates. Our Assistant Secretary for the Board is Melissa Benedetto. Our Corporate Reporter is Denise Elswee of Denise Elswee and Associates. For those who are here for the first time, I'm going to briefly outline the procedure which the Board of Adjustment has adopted. Number one, the applicant or his or her attorney will present their case. The applicant may call witnesses on his or her behalf. There will be questions by the board members and questions to the witnesses by objectors related only to the witness's testimony. This procedure will be repeated with each and every witness. When asking a question regarding specifically this testimony, the public may only ask questions about that expert's testimony. Upon completion of the presentation by the applicant or his or her attorney, all parties who are interested may present their views. The public may comment on any aspect of the application, and the public comment period at the close of the application. When speaking, please give your name, address, and if you're interested in the application, to the Board Secretary, or the Board Reporter, and speak into the microphone. To avoid delays, do not repeat but any previous objectors already objected to other than to acknowledge agreement with that objector. All appeals shall be taken to the Superior Court within 45 days of the date of the publication of the decision. Is there very important that all objectors present tonight be heard by the board? The board will complete all appeals on the agenda, if at all possible, prior to 10:00 PM. We will now proceed with the regular scheduled meeting. There are no announcements. Number five on the agenda tonight is approval of general vouchers for payment. There are two vouchers, one for Denise Elswee and Associates, and second voucher number 24 01091-06 for Dast and Steiger PC. The total is $1,568.83. There is Mr. Luthman and Mr. Tormolin on the second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Item six on the agenda is approval of escrow vouchers for payment. There are three, voucher 2406710 for Dast and Steiger, voucher number 2406118 for Redington and Vernic and Associates, voucher 2406711 for A.R.H. Associates, and 2406751 also for A.A.R. Associates, for the total of $20,704.25.
Vote for the second.
There is Mr. Luthman on motion, and Ms. Tormolin on the second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Tonight, there are three escrow refund vouchers. I'll read them all as per motion. A refund voucher for Asima Arsalan, block 393, lot 5.06, and a refund voucher for Mandelreiner, block 709, lots 300, 302, et cetera.
Vote for the second.
That is Mr. Luthman and Ms. Tormolin on the second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. We have some minutes of the meeting. We have Board of Adjustment meeting minutes for the regular meeting April 25, 2024. Is there a motion of approval or acceptance?
I have a correction on it. What do we got?
On page five, just above paragraph five, where it says Brandon Stellati addresses the wrong address, I happen to know from the person.
That's just a typo. I can fix it up.
The whole thing's wrong. The address is 2005 Hamilton Drive, not 202 Hamilton Way, right here. No, I've been living there for 40 years. I'm pretty sure I know where I live.
I'll correct it. Don't worry about it.
Note in the correction, I have a motion by Mr. Luthman. Is there a second? A second by Ms. Tormolin, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed.
Cat's out of the bag now. That was her secret house of hiding.
That's it. I didn't know about it.
She's going to be pet now.
Number nine, tonight is resolutions of approval. We have Gerard Burney, 358 Venice Drive, block 1946.02, lot 27. Appeal number 13919, both variants approved.
Vote for the second.
That is a motion by Mr. Luthman, a second by Ms. Tormolin. Roll call, please.
Mr. Luthman?
Yes.
Mr. Mollin?
Yes.
Mr. Colucci?
Yes.
Mr. Erd?
Yes.
And Mr. Christian?
Yes. The second resolution of approval tonight is Craig Hoffmeyer, it's 28 Chadwick Avenue, block 833, lot 38. Appeal number 13913, both variants approved.
Vote for the second.
There is Mr. Luthman and Ms. Tormolin on the second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Luthman?
Yes.
Mr. Mollin?
Yes.
Mr. Colucci?
Yes.
Mr. Erd?
Yes.
And Mr. Christian?
Yes. The third resolution of approval tonight is Patrick and Jennifer O'Callahan, 72 Beach Way, block 921.01, lot 11 and 12. Appeal number 13911, use D1 FAR, and both variants approved.
Vote for the second.
Mr. Luthman and Ms. Tormolin again on the second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Luthman?
Yes.
Mr. Mollin?
Yes.
Mr. Colucci?
Yes.
Mr. Erd?
Yes.
And Mr. Christian?
Yes. The fourth and final resolution of approval tonight is 478 Lakers Road LLC. That's 478 Lakers Road, block 535.08, lots 35.01. Appeal number 13907, use D1 variants and preliminary and final major site plan approved.
Vote for the second.
Mr. Luthman and Ms. Tormolin on the second, please. Roll call.
Mr. Luthman?
Yes.
Mr. Mollin?
Yes.
Mr. Colucci?
Yes.
Mr. Erd?
Yes.
Yes. New applications tonight, there is one, it's appeal number 13914, both variants, public hearing open, of testimony heard, John J. Lanza, 52 Ocean Bay Boulevard, block 950.12, lot 3. The applicant seeking approval to construct first and second story additions to existing single family dwelling. Minimum side yard setback, 10 feet required, permitted, 4 feet proposed on the east side, 8 on the west. Maximum canopy projection, 2 feet required or permitted, 2.4 feet proposed. Deck side yard setback, 10 feet required, permitted, 3 feet proposed on the east, 4.7 feet proposed on the west. Deck rear yard setback, 23 required, permitted, 3 feet proposed. Mr. York?
Thank you. To the record, Harvey O'York, known as George Cogus and Uli, representing the applicant. This is a house approval, not a swimming pool, so I suspect we're no appooled to either. However, this application, we have Mr. Matt Hockenberry as our witness applying help in progress. Is there any sworn?
Do you swear from a testimony? Give your full score. It'll be the truth, the whole truth, the truth.
Thank you. Matt Hockenberry with the firm MCH Engineering, here at Tom Zerber, licensed professional engineer, licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey, here before the court.
Welcome back, sir.
Thank you.
And you'll accept this qualification?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Matt, can you describe to the board where the property is located in the town?
Yes, so the address again is 52 Ocean Bay Boulevard, block 950.12, lot 3. We're in the Ocean Beach Shores Homeowners Association here on the Bay Area. Ocean Beach Shores consists of single family homes located along the north and south side of Ocean Bay Boulevard, which runs from the ocean all the way to the bay. This property is located on the beach block. It's three houses east of Route 35 North intersection. What's unique about this property is that most of the Ocean Beach Shore community is located in the RV5 zone. However, when the town rezoned, the island, they pulled this property specifically into the GB zone, which of course is the business zone that runs along Route 35.
In fact, when you look at the zoning map, it's as if the zoner went out of their way to include this lot in the GB zone.
It is that way.
But the lot itself is sized, shaped, and located as a residential lot.
And surrounded by similar properties in that residential community. What's unique about the GB zone, it does allow for single family use, but it dramatically changes the setback requirements compared to the RV5 zone and the rest of the Ocean Beach Shores community. Again, as far as surrounding area, we have single family dwellings surrounding us on all four sides and that across the street to the south, so not really a business to be seen in the survey. The property consists of a 51-foot wide by 7950 shape with an area of 4,040 square feet. Currently contains a single-story, single-family dwelling constructed in the late 60s based on tax records. House is L-shaped, has a stone driveway in the front, shed in the rear, a concrete patio along the rear of the house. As it sits today, there are a number of existing nonconformities. 5,000 square feet is required for lot area. Again, we have 4,040 square feet, so it's an undersized lot. Lot depth, 100 feet is required. We have 79.21 feet existing. Front setback, 20 feet is required, 19.65 feet is existing. Side setback, 10 feet is required. We have 9.7 feet on the west side, 5.5 feet on the east, and then the existing shed is nonconforming to the rear and side setback requirements. So the applicant is proposing to demolish the existing dwelling, shed, patios, everything on the site, and construct a new one and a half story dwelling. As you can see on the plan that was submitted to the board prepared by Allison and Erin, and Zerber, the house is square in shape, it's 39 feet in both directions, has a small cutout in the front for the front door, and the stairs that go down through the paper driveway along the entire frontage. We're also going to extend a curb cut along the entire frontage. This HOA doesn't permit on-street parking, so it's my understanding that we're not bound by the driveway width standards. There's usually a maximum width when you have, especially on the Bay Area, when we're looking to maintain on-street parking, but this HOA doesn't allow it, so the applicant is proposing a driveway across the entire frontage. We have a paper driveway that's going to eat up a little paper walkway down the west or left side of the house. That wraps around to a grade level deck, it's about six or seven inches up from grade off the back of the house. We're proposing a small five-foot wide deck that's going to have a shower on the east side, our AC that's on the west side, and stairs that go down to that grade level deck on the north side. The finished floor of the home will be elevation 12.7, so it's about 5.5 feet above grade. So the area below the home is going to have about a 4.5 or 5-foot tall crawl space. It's going to be used for storage only, obviously not havelable space.
But variants is required.
So for variants, we have a side yard setback, 10 feet is required each side. We have 4 feet proposed on the west side, 8 feet on the east. Side yard setback for a deck, 10 feet is required. We have 4.7 feet proposed. Rear yard setback for a deck, 20 feet is required. We're proposing 11.2 feet. And max roof overhang, 2 feet is required or permitted, and we have 2.5 feet proposed for a small canopy that's over the front door. As far as the side yard nonconformities, this is kind of what I was talking about when I said that the GB zone designation changes the setback requirement significantly. In the GB zone, the side setback requirement is 10 feet each side. In the residential zone surrounding this property, the requirement would be 4 feet one side, 12 feet combined. As you can see, we're proposing 4 feet and 8 feet side setbacks, so we would meet the setback requirements in those adjacent residential zoning districts. Our deck is also 4.7 feet from the west side setback, which again would meet the adjacent zone requirements for a deck setback.
So effectively, we would meet the residential zone requirements, but not the business requirements?
Yes. GB zone designation also impacts the rear yard setback, so it calls for a 20-foot hard setback to any structure. However, in the adjacent residential zone, we would be permitted to have a deck setback 10% of our lot depth, or 7.9 feet. And I mentioned earlier, our deck setback is 11.2 feet, so we would otherwise comply in the adjacent zone by 3 feet of spare. The final variance is one that's, I think, actually legitimate, no matter what zone we were in, but in my opinion, it's the minimus. It's the cantilever roof overhang that we're proposing over the front door. We're proposing 2.5 feet deep, or almost 2 feet is permitted. I'm just going to show you that on the elevation, so you can see what I'm talking about. Talking about this small roof overhang, no post that come down, it's cantilever, and here's a side view of it. So as you can see, it's kind of over the front door there. Won't have any support posts. Again, it's not going to block any views. In my opinion, it looks more aesthetically pleasing, a little bit larger, and the additional six inches is certainly not going to have a negative impact on any neighboring properties. From a planning standpoint, it's my opinion that we have a property with hardships caused by the peculiar zoning designation. The setback variances we're seeking today, we're designed to follow the adjacent residential zoning requirements, which in my opinion are more appropriate to this property. By designing it this way and seeking the setback variances that we are, we're proposing a house that picks the character of the neighborhood better than if we followed the GB zone designation and those requirements. My opinion, we're providing adequate light and open space and a major aesthetic upgrade from what's there today. I don't see any negative impact on neighboring properties, and granting the variances will not impair the intent and purpose of his own plan and his own.
And in fact, the house that is designed matches the houses in the neighborhood?
Yes.
So we're not asking for anything other than what everybody else asked. No further questions.
Thank you. We'll start tonight with Ms. Hockenberry.
Good evening. Just to go through our memo that was issued November 21, 2024, with regards to impact to surrounding properties for stormwater runoff, you are increasing the impervious on-site. Would you consider doing some infiltration, spits and recharge?
So I did look at that. First, we'll agree to provide more, file evasions, and you guys will be looking for that in this letter. The impervious coverage table included the framed deck in the rear yard, so I'll speak to Allison and have her revise that. That wouldn't count as impervious coverage, so it's kind of skewed a little bit. And then the majority of the impervious that we're proposing is in the front yard that's going to drain to the right way and away from neighboring properties. So we're taking away a concrete patio and shed in the rear yard and a paper walkway. We're replacing it with a pervious load of a ground deck, and most of our impervious is going to shed through the right way. We provide the two-foot pervious strip around the property, and I think we could normally add a note in this zone that we would direct computers away from neighboring properties and towards pervious yard areas, and we would agree that out to this point.
Would you agree to do some roof drains, which is with some perforated pipe along the property line, just to help promote some infiltration to a French drainage system?
We could look at that. I'm not sure the water table is conducive to that in this area, but I know in this area, we have not with the pervious strip in the soils that are sandy, obviously sandy soils.
Typically, on the ocean side, the water table's, you know, a little bit more favorable. Might seem to be put out some, at least some roof runoff to do some additional infiltration. That would just be my recommendation. And then as far as the dwelling goes, the width of the driveway, you are proposing a design waiver with regards to, you're going to, just for clarification, what will the setback be on the concrete paper for the curb cut on both sides?
So it's going to be right as wide as the property would to provide the press care along the entire frontage. In this zone, I don't believe that the maximum dragwood width requirement applies. There's a section in the ordinance that says it doesn't when the HOA restricts. That doesn't allow concrete.
So your curb cut that you're proposing will have a zero offset from the property line?
It looks like you would have about approximately 2 feet on both sides.
2 feet on both sides. And then just with regards, I guess you have already given testimony with regards to proposed elevation, and we'll be in full compliance with the, with being those current design standards as it relates to elevation. All right, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Weiser. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Hockenberry, just a couple of questions. You have our report.
Yes.
If you could go to page three, you, down under accessory structure in the matrix for the deck, you correct, or I guess we correctly identified and you concur that the west, there's variance on the west side yard setback of 4.7. We had identified on the east side setback a three-foot variance. Can you, were we wrong?
Yeah, so that is, that deck is like six or seven inches above grade, and the ordinance in the yard areas, a portion of it says the deck under 36.
So it's below the height? Okay. And then for the rear yard setback, we again, I had identified a three-foot, where you, I think you said you're at 11.2?
11.2 to the stairs, so the upper deck is where we took the rear yard, where we need to be necessary.
Okay.
The other deck is low again.
Is low. Okay, that's fine. And then lastly, we had asked on that same page to, if you could just provide some details of the proposed outdoor shower structure?
I spoke to the applicant, so it's going to be on that elevated deck right at our first finished board, so it'll have a drain above the design flat elevation, which is required for KEMA, and it'll have three sides of basically vinyl, like vinyl pans.
Okay. Privacy height being?
Say 6 feet.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, that's all we have with the exception of what has come to be our standard comment about recommending that the plot plan be revised to include the key map showing zoning districts within 500 feet. I'm not sure that the key map really hits that, as well as the listing of the names and addresses, block and lot numbers of all owners within 200.
And we would ask for a waiver of both two requirements.
Thank you, Mr. Weiser. Mr. Dast?
Mr. Chairman, I just have one point of clarification. Mr. Hockenberry, I hope I misheard, but if you wanted to clarify the side yard setback, east is 4 feet, the west is 8 feet. I thought I heard the second reverse. The east is 4 feet, west is 8 feet. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. Board members?
Just go over, you've got 4 and 8 as your side yard setbacks. The canopy is 2.4.
It's 2.5.
2.5. Deck side yard setback, you're going to be 4.7. Rear yard setback, 3.
11.2.
11.2.
Anyone else? Any member of the public with a question regarding the testimony? Please step forward. Please give your name and address, please.
Put in your name and address.
Yes. Good evening. Darling, corrects to 207 Ocean Bay Boulevard?
Put in those names, please.
P.E.R.E.K.S.T.A. So first question is, does the homeowners association board need to be noticed of any application for variance when the bylaws and the deed restriction have their own setback and side yard restrictions as well as a height restriction?
I think the applicant's counsel.
The answer is that's not part of the notice requirements. There is a section in the ordinance which says the association should have notice. We have argued before that that provision in the ordinance is invalid. Notice is governed by the municipal land use law, not the association or the ordinance. However, we have transmitted a set of the plans to the association, and I don't, are you representing the association?
Well, I contacted the board, and the board members told me they never received any notification.
We have, we have transmitted it, but.
Can you tell me who it was submitted to?
Post office box that we were told was submitted.
To the, to the post office box in Lavalette?
Yes.
They never got it.
It's there today.
The answer is, it has been transmitted. The ordinance, even if it were valid, doesn't say when it's delivered, or how it's delivered, or what is delivered. It said notice. So it makes no difference.
I think it's a little late if it's delivered today.
So if we could, I just want to punt over to our counsel, Mr. Dast, see if you guys have more words of wisdom?
Certainly the HOA was aware of the application here, but tonight.
No, I got, I was noticed because of a neighbor who got noticed within 200.
Right. Yeah, but if you only have to provide notice, it probably runs within 200.
Right. But I think what I just heard Mr. York say is that there's a town ordinance, and when I asked at the town, when I went to look at the plan, they said, yeah, they thought that it would have to be noticed to the association or the trustees. So that's, they said, go to the meeting and ask the question. I asked the question, and what I just heard Mr. York say is that there is such an ordinance, but he takes issue with the ordinance, that he doesn't believe that it governs, so that it's going to take all this.
Well, it's not a pre-work was to have the hearing proof that the HOA was noticed. Mr. York indicated that they sent notice to the HOA. They provide the public notice that was sent to all property owners within 200 feet. So the board has jurisdiction to hear the application.
Question. So the notice can be provided, what I just heard, and just going to give the homeowners say, that the notice got from the post office, we didn't to the post office box today. I didn't check with the board members today. I checked previous, but I thought they would get at least one of the round.
I can't comment as to when they dropped it off, Mr. Chairman, but certainly they would have to provide notice.
The ordinance, the ordinance, even if it were valid, and I argue that it isn't, says all applications to the zoning work shall include proof of notice. Okay, I'll have my client sworn in. He gave notice. It doesn't say when, how, or what. It could be oral, it could be written. I mean, the ordinance is, with all due respect, vague and unenforceable.
Serviceable.
But in this instance, my client delivered it, and it went to the post office today. That we've complied with this ordinance. There's no statute that doesn't say you have to do it 10 days in advance.
Again, respectfully, in all fairness, I think the board of trustees should have more than five minutes' notice, and they told me they weren't aware of any application, and that's why, I can't say that's why, but no one from the board is here. I'm here, but let me move on to my next question. There are, as I said, our deed restrictions are more restricted than the town, and I get it, the town is not here to enforce our deed restriction. However, past practices have been that applicants who are rebuilding their homes or remodeling start with the association, trying to, in order to avoid, you know, the town saying one thing, and then they have to go to the association, the association says no, which is more restricted than the town, then they have to go back and go to the town. So when I looked at the plans last week, when I came to the town, I noted that there were no elevations, it was just, you know, aerial view, and I get that for side setback and rear setback reasons, but it did say the height was going to be at 22.7, and then I heard, you know, testimony that this is all in keeping with the other houses in the neighborhood. I don't know if this board is aware, we've been through litigation on our street, our association, two significant litigations, one just last year where we, where a deck was removed because it violated the height restriction, and in any event, I can't tell because there's no elevation, but if you take the 22.7 and you minus our deed restriction, which requires habitable walk space, can't be a full second story, and you're, from your finished first floor to the top of your highest rip being, can't be more than 17.6. can't be more than 17.6. And then you take the foundation height that's supposed to be on that area of the block, it appears that they, they're a foot over. Again, I'm just raising that, I know this board is not in the business of necessarily enforcing our deed restrictions, but again, just trying to raise that issue to kind of save some time because after, if they get approval from the board, they still have to get approval from the club. So at some point, we'll see, I guess our, the club would see architectural drawings and have to approve this, and it just appears that it may be violating some of our restrictions. So again, I think that was a fair comment as to why the board should get notice and have the opportunity to appear and speak as the board of trustees. I'm not on the board, I'm just a neighbor, but I am beneficiary of the deed restriction. And again, I was told our board was not aware of it, now I find out it was just, it was not the post office box today, but that's all I have.
I may respond to two things. Whatever the deed restrictions are, they are, they're non-enforceable here. However, I want to apologize to the board. I gave you bad law today. I gave you the restrictions that are set forth in the RB5 zone. My associate, Mr. Hack, Hockenberry, reminds me, we are not in the RB5 zone, we're in the GB zone, so that provision of the ordinance doesn't even apply. We're not even required to get notice. Again, upon the law, indeed me, but that provision of the ordinance doesn't apply, so we don't even have to give notice.
So, okay, it sounds like when beneficial, Mr. York suggests that the provision of the law that applies to the RB5 zone should apply to his mind, when it's not beneficial, he says, let's go back to the.
No, I merely cite the law the way it's written. I'm not looking for any break or any benefit. I made a misrepresentation to the board that a particular ordinance applies. It does not apply as a matter of law. We are not in the RB5 zone, we are in the GB.
Mr. Destin. He's correct?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hockenberry's correct.
Back to him. He's going to have lawyer afterwards.
Any other members of the public with a question on the application? Or comment? Please step forward.
Hi, my name is Susan Lambarelllo. I live at 48 Ocean Bay Boulevard next door.
How's that one last name? Are you making a comment?
Yeah.
I'm going to comment. Are you sure I can help? Sure. Do swear affirm a testimony, appear before this board with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I just want to say since I'm, I mean, I know what's going on here, I know what their application was for. I've sat on this board and I understand what Darling's trying to say, but as far as I am concerned, and as far as I know, this application was for all the setbacks, none of the setbacks affecting, you know, our deed restriction. I am directly affected by it all, I live directly next door and I am fine with it. You know, other, other, other homes in our development have decks that are low bearing, just like they're talking about, they go to the edges, especially on the Bay Block where she lives. The, our deed restriction is eight and four, which is what they were looking for. I don't see any problem with it. I personally don't have a problem with it and I am directly affected. I just wanted to make that as a comment. Thank you.
Ma'am, just a question for you. If I'm looking at the applicant's home, do you live immediately to the right or left?
I live to the east, so if you're looking at our house to the right.
To the right, okay, thank you. Any other members in the public? Can I have a motion to close the public portion?
Motion to close.
Some motion to close by Mr. Luthman, seconded by Ms. Tormolin. Mr. York, do you have anything else?
No.
Or?
Okay.
That will obtain a motion of approval or denial for the application?
Motion to approve the application based on the testimony. We're going to grant four foot on the east side, side yard setback, eight foot on the west side. We're going to grant a max canopy projection of 2.5. We're going to grant a deck side yard setback of 4.7 on the west and the rear yard setback of 11.2. Unfinished attic space is to remain unfinished, other than the, correct? Is that the right numbers?
No, the attic space is habitable.
This, I thought you said it was uninhabitable.
No, the basement is uninhabitable.
The crawl space is uninhabitable.
All right, well, it's not bedroom, is it?
The upstairs?
No, the, the storage attic, which I understood you said was going to remain as storage attic.
No, sorry, I was describing, there's no habitable space in the crawl space below the.
So let me ask you a question before I finish. The unfinished attic space, that's not going to be a pet.
It is, oh, the un, so there's a portion of the unfinished attic space here that I'm describing?
Yeah.
Uh, no.
Okay, then we're fine. Just unfinished attic space, so this is not a benefit.
This is not habitable as a storage in this portion.
That's fine. We need, new plans for spot elevations? Okay, new plans each side, yes. So are we going to put a perforated pipe for the, for the gutter, is it possible?
We can, we can work with the cell's office.
Now, there's also going to be a waiver of the map again.
Oh, a waiver of the map, yes. And the map and the.
And the property office.
Yes.
Okay, so that's a motion of approval, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
And I believe the driveway would also require.
I don't, we would ask for it if it does, but I don't think it does. The ordinance provision says that if the HOA does not permit non-street parking, that the driveway is maximally.
We'll ask for the waiver. You get the waiver. I don't think there's going to be a problem over there because there's no one's being parked.
Okay, so that's a motion of approval by Mr. Luthman, seconded by Ms. Tormolin. Roll call, please.
Mr. Luthman?
Yes.
Mr. Tormolin?
Yes.
Mr. Calucci?
Yes.
Mr. Frazinski?
Yes.
Mr. Pell?
Yes.
Mr. Erb?
Yes.
And Mr. Kreske?
Yes, application put in for you, roll call.
Thank you.
Our second application, pending application, is deal number 13893, use D1 variance, bulk variance, public, I'm sorry, preliminary and final major site plan, public hearing open, testimony carried, currently carried from November 18th, 2024, for further testimony. Christ Church of Tom's River, 415 Washington Street, block 687, lot 16. The applicant seeks use D1 variance and preliminary and final major site plan approval to construct a 949 square foot homeless shelter addition with 17 beds connected to an existing outreach office of Christ Church of Christ. The proposed homeless shelter is not permitted in the R150 zone. Number of parking spaces, 183 spaces required permitted, 115 parking spaces proposed. Mr. York?
Thank you. With regard to RBO York, known as York Jacobus Dooley, representing the applicant, this is a continuation of the prior hearing. At this time, I would like to call Pastor Susan Jones, Mr. Pastor.
May I make your name? Do swear affirm the testimony about giving us matter with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
State your name, spell your last name.
Reverend Susan Jones, J-O-N-E-S. I'm a pastor of Holy Cross Lutheran Church here in Tom's River. My residence is 713 Almeida Drive in Tom's River, and I'm here on behalf of the Tom's River Housing and Homeless Coalition.
Pastor, would you describe your relationship with this specific homeless shelter and your knowledge of it and how you've been involved?
The relationship that we have is that it's a partnership. It's the operation of the current program at the housing center, which is located in the parish house, which is the base building that we're talking about. It's a partnership between Christ Church, the Affordable Housing Alliance, and the Tom's River Housing and Homeless Coalition. The coalition has been in existence as an official nonprofit since 2019 with the mission statement to address unmet needs for those folks who are homeless or at risk of becoming homeless in Tom's River and Ocean County. We operated an outreach center in Corporate Circle for about a year and a half, and we had the opportunity, when Christ Church offered us the opportunity, to relocate that operation to the parish house so that we could be closer to where the people were that we needed to serve. There's the plus that ran out to where we were, et cetera, et cetera. So we were having a real problem being able to serve people effectively in that location. The ultimate goal of the coalition, which is a partnership of a lot of nonprofits and other organizations, was ultimately to see if we could figure out how to provide shelter space. There is none in Ocean County. We're sorely lacking in the ability to be able to provide emergency shelter for people who need a place to stay and a roof over their head for transitional housing, to try to figure out how to make space for them in a more permanent situation. There's nothing around. We've been shipping people all over the place, we've been putting people in hotels, they're temporary solutions, the motel availability is drying up, they're being sold, for people to build private homes down in Seaside, et cetera, et cetera. And so we kind of got ourselves together and said, let's see if we can figure out how to get some space to help provide support for people who need it. It's as simple as that. And so this opportunity came along when we partnered the church, affordable housing, and us. We had that conversation going from the very beginning, is there an opportunity for us to be able to provide shelter in this space? And the congregation came through and said, let's see if we can make it happen.
Now, you represent or part of the holding cross who's in the church, am I correct?
I'm the pastor there, yes.
Are there other religious bodies or institutions which are supporting this?
Some, yes.
And would you describe to the board your background with the homeless and how you came to be involved in this endeavor, describing in some detail who the homeless actually are?
Okay. Just a little bit of background. I spent my first 25 years as a professional, as an engineer, and God has a sense of humor and here I am as a pastor these days. I've been a pastor for 14 years. In my seminary experience, I volunteered a lot as a lay leader, just as a member of my church for different ministries, but when I really got connected to challenges of folks who are homeless or at risk was during my seminary experience, I actually was assigned to a congregation in Camden, New Jersey, where it's a really critical issue. When I moved out here, a couple of folks in my congregation got me connected to an organization that's been around for about 20 years trying to address this issue, that turned into the coalition over time. And my interest was piqued because, especially with the reality that there was really no solution to where we provide a roof over somebody's head when we're trying to help them get connected to the services that they're eligible for. I can tell you that my personal experience is, the demographics of the community that you're in drive the demographics of the folks that you're working with. So the folks that I worked with in Camden have a little bit of a different demographic profile than the folks that I'm working with here in Tom's River. They represent the community. They represent the community. I asked somebody one time at the, at the housing center, how would you describe the folks that we work with? And the answer was, our neighbors who have fallen on hard times. That's the reality. I don't know if you want to go any farther on that one, Harvey, let me know.
I would ask you to describe, in your experience over the last 14 years, who are these people? What, how would you describe them?
How would I describe them?
Are they working people, are they not working people?
It's, you know, for the both.
Are they mentally ill? Describe to the board, since you have had hands-on contact with these people.
Well, and again, it's a little different circumstances in this area than it was in other places that I have engaged with folks who are homeless. And the bottom line in this area is, it's affordability issue. Okay, we live in an area that it's very expensive to live in. As a matter of fact, when I came out here eight years ago, if I had to buy the same house now with the interest rates the way they are, I wouldn't even live in the community that I serve, because I'm a single homeowner with a single income. So these are folks who have, homelessness is a symptom of something else, it's as simple as that. And the something else can be all kinds of things. It's everything from a job loss to being underemployed, to not having medical benefits at the job that you're working at, to being in a domestic violence situation, to, yeah, there are some folks with mental health issues, but the majority of the people that we're dealing with here in our program are affordability issues. COVID didn't help our situation, because it's after COVID that all of our prices to be able to afford our daily living expenses went through the roof. It's also that period of time where the cost of housing in this area and the interest rates went through the roof. Okay, don't look at Zoom or Zillow to look at your, your house and see what it's worth. It'd be nice, mine's gone from about $285,000 to over $400,000 in the neighborhood that I live in. I wouldn't be able to purchase it at this point in my life. So there are lots of reasons why people find themselves in a situation where they can no longer keep a roof over their head. And that's, what I'm just trying to get across is, there's no one single profile of somebody who has found themselves homeless or at risk. It primarily in this area is boiling down to affordability.
Now, in your role in trying to find housing for the homeless, you're aware of what's available in Tom's River and the county, is that correct?
To some degree, yes. I'm not the resident next to you, but.
Would you describe what your encounters have revealed and any information you have about affordability?
The encounters that we've had is that there's just not enough affordable housing. One of the challenges that folks have is that when they lose their housing for one reason or another, to try to get them into another location, the hurdles that they have to jump in order to either come up with a down payment or to come up with the, you know, a couple of months of rent to start off with, as well as application fees and stuff like that, are, are just not reachable. And then the other challenge is the inventory of affordable housing for people to move into. We really have not made an effort in this area to provide you affordable housing that we should have been provided. It just, it makes it really hard to find places for folks to, to move into. And a lot of these folks aren't working. Part of the challenge that they have is they're working at jobs that many times are paying minimum wage or in that area, they don't have the kind of time to take time off to be running around to all of the different service providers that they might be eligible to receive benefits from. They can't take that kind of time off without risking their job. And it's a crying shame to be a working person and living in your car or living on somebody else's couch. It's a challenge. I, I'll just throw this one out there just for fun, because affordability being such the issue that it is, how many folks in this town have 20 to 30 something year old grown adults still living at home? There's a reason for that. It's affordability. Okay, as far as the details, my folks in Trenton gave me some information with regard to that. There is a, the median individual income in Ocean County, well, in Tom's River, is $43,668 a year, individual income, median. The median household income is $90,593. The housing wage to be able to afford a two-bedroom apartment is $79,215. That's $38 an hour. Minimum wage is $15.13. You have to work more than two full-time jobs to be able to afford the rent for even one-bedroom apartment, unless less than two. Now you start to understand, you know, what's going on. There's also some information from, it's called the ALIS threshold. It stands for Asset Limited Income Constrained Employee. And it's a number that is created by, for most states, but particularly in New Jersey, And it's a number that is created by, for most states, but particularly in New Jersey, because it's a research nonprofit that was developed by the United Way of Northern New Jersey. And that ALIS threshold is basically the minimum income that's needed to afford basic living expenses. Forty-six percent of the population of Ocean County is below the threshold.
In your opinion, would this particular facility with 17 beds make an impact on solving the housing crisis?
It won't solve it, but it will make a dent, which is the intention. You gotta do something.
And in your view, having met these people, worked with these people, do you see this as a permanent housing issue, or will this facility be a transitional facility?
It's intended to be transitional.
And would you describe your view of what transitional means and how it applies?
I think Randy Gason could testify to that in a previous hearing. Generally speaking, it's about a 30-day intentional stay. Depending on the circumstances, as we're working the challenges with folks, it might be extended if we need a little bit more time to get them housed, but it's not intended for them to move in and be there forever.
And the people that are going to reside in this facility, are they free to come and go, or do they need to be controlled in any way?
I'll answer your second question first. Do they need to be controlled in any way? No. They're not a threat to anybody. Can they come and go as they please? Not really, because the idea is for them to be safe, as well as for the community to be safe. They are members of this community, and they need to be provided with safety and safe housing. It's not safe to be living in your car. It's not safe to be living in a tent. We had somebody a number of years ago who was living in a tent in the winter and a tree fell on. I mean, seriously, this is a safety issue for all of us, on top of just doing the right thing, because it's the right thing to do, to help people who are a little down on their luck and need a way to get moved into a better situation.
I have no further questions. Thank you. Mr. Gazarovski, anything?
I have questions, yes. Thank you. My name is Ryan Gazarovski. I introduced myself in the last hearing, and I'm representing the board whom I was representing. And I do have some questions of this witness. I'm sorry, but I didn't catch your name when you were first introduced.
I go by Pastor Sue.
Why me?
I go by Pastor Sue.
Pastor Sue, so you're a member of the clergy?
I am, yes.
And are you also the pastor of the particular house of worship within this community?
Yes, I'm the pastor of Holy Cross Lutheran Church on Hooper Avenue in Toms River.
Okay. What is the proximity of that church or religious institution to the subject property?
About three miles.
You're three miles away. So is it fair to say that if you're three miles away, if in fact this particular application is approved, it will have virtually no impact on your facility?
It'll have a huge impact on my facility, based on the number of people that are knocking on my door all the time, looking for support, and also for the number of people within my own congregation who find themselves homeless.
Okay. Now, what is the size of the church that you were presently the pastor of?
Approximately 400 people.
Okay. Do you have a basement in your church?
No.
Do you have facilities outside of wherever it may be, on the main floor?
In the main church building? No. We're in the process of rebuilding the parish center after a fire.
So having said that, in addition to the main church which you had, is there also an ancillary building?
Yes, there is.
And how big is that?
About 7,000 square feet.
Well, why would you not then, as the person who is in charge of that facility, seek some remedy or application to provide this particular type of use within your own facility?
We were looking at that possibility.
Were you looking at the possibility?
Objection!
Ron, Ron, Mr. Gazarovski, please, sir.
Hang on.
Why me?
Hang on, guys. Gentlemen, gentlemen, everybody stop. Ask a question for everybody. Ask a question, let her answer. You asked a question, she was in the middle of an answer, so please let her answer, okay?
I'm listening, thank you.
Thank you.
That is...
We were looking into that possibility. COVID hit, and then we had a fire in the building, so the building is not usable.
So there is presently, is there one or two buildings on your property?
This question is not about my property. It's not a usable facility for this at this point in time, whether we wanted to or not.
When did the fire take place?
March of '22.
Okay. Prior to March of '22, did you, as pastor of the facility, make any intent to provide homeless shelter for people within this community?
Objection! This is an application for the facility of Christ Church. What somebody else could do, wants to do, is absolutely irrelevant.
It goes to the credibility.
Let me get this straight. I just want to hear that you just said it goes to the reverend's credibility?
That's correct.
I object.
Well, are you suggesting that your fact that they should...
Mr. Gazarovski, hold on one second. Chris.
Mr. Chairman, the cross-examination should be with regard to what the pastor testified to on direct examination. Certainly, the one question as to why the pastor did not look to have this application at her facility has been asked and answered, and we've passed that. So, Mr. Gazarovski, I think it's time to pass that.
Let's go a little bit further. With regard to this particular application, you presented the last hearing?
Yes.
And you listened to the testimony in this work, correct?
Yes.
She was the only person who is the CEO of the entity that runs this facility, who testified on behalf of the facility, isn't she, or wasn't she?
Objection! It goes beyond the direct testimony. This has nothing to do with her testimony tonight.
She is giving testimony as to perhaps the need for some type of a shelter in Ocean County or Toms River, and her responses are purely generic. They have nothing to do with the application that is for this board.
Well, it doesn't sound like the, I'm sorry, is it reverend or pastor?
Well...
Whatever your... I want to use the appropriate title.
You can call it reverend.
Here you go. I'm an ordained reverend in the Lutheran Church, the Evangelical Lutheran Church of America, but I go by pastor, so go for it.
It doesn't sound to me like Pastor Sue was giving planning or engineering testimony. So I'm not sure I understand your angle.
Well, my question is, she's pastor, that's wonderful. How does she give testimony as to the issue of whether or not at this particular location it is either suitable, or it's a part of an accessory use of the church?
And respectfully, I didn't hear Pastor Sue make that argument.
Why me?
I said that I don't think, at least I did not hear Pastor Sue make the argument that this particular site was suitable. Her testimony of general need, am I incorrect?
I believe she testified as to the relationship between, generally the relationship between the church and the...
But she's acting in testimonies as a suitable building of the site that I would move at, her entire testimony is stripped. It's completely irrelevant to the application before this board.
Okay. Chris?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I think it's the applicant's application. I think it is relevant, because she did testify as to the interworkings and the relationship between the church and between the affordable housing nonprofit. Now, if the board will recall, at the first hearing, Mr. Gazarovski and other individuals raised the issue of the fact that there was no one here representing the church to talk about the interplay and how the relationship was working, and that's why I think the pastor was here. So it certainly is relevant. So, Mr. Gazarovski?
Respectfully, respectfully, and I do respect your calling to the church. She has presented absolutely no testimony.
Okay.
No testimony. May I explain this, please? Absolutely no testimony with regard to whether or not this is in fact an accessory use of the existing Church of Christ facility, Church of Christ Church.
Well, Mr. Chairman, that's for the board to weigh the testimony, yet at the end of the day, Mr. Gazarovski, your testimony stands. If you have one cross-examination of the pastor, I think you should...
The board cannot consider the irrelevant testimony?
I think it is relevant, and I think the board thinks it's relevant, and they can weigh it as they see fit, as the...
How do you know whether or not the board thinks it's relevant? It's a question of the board.
How about this, Mr. Gazarovski? I think it's relevant, and I'm the board chairman.
I respect that.
Thank you, sir.
Now, how about with regard to the existing field facility of the Church of Christ? Are you familiar with that facility?
Yes, I am.
You know what the approximate square footage of that facility is?
Not off the top of my head, but I'm very familiar with how it is, the inside and the outside of that building, yes.
Okay. Are you familiar with the basement of that building?
Yes, I am.
You know what the approximate square footage of that is?
Not off the top of my...
Well, you know what is being proposed in this building?
Yes, I do.
Of the property? Could not, in your estimation anyway, determine whether or not you can also place those homeless people for temporary shelter into the basement of the Church of Christ Church?
Objection! That's not the application. And she's not here testifying as a planner or an engineer, and this is way beyond her direct testimony.
Agreed.
She has testified as to the issue of homelessness within, with her Toms River or Ocean County. Now, with regard to this particular facility, this is not being put forth as a homeless shelter for homeless people, is it?
Yes, it is.
Well, as I read the application, and I listened to the testimony, it is supposed to be a temporary, when I say temporary, not temporary, for use of the entire building in a 24-hour period, but it's temporary in that certain people, 17 of them, can seek shelter to sleep overnight in that building, is it not?
That's correct.
So it is not a homeless shelter for homeless people, but rather it is a temporary shelter for people who have no place to sleep, to sleep in the basement of that facility on a temporary basis?
If you can answer the question, Pastor, that would be great. If not...
I can answer the question. The application is to be able to provide transitional shelter for 17 people based on the square footage of that basement area and how many people it will support.
Now, when you say transitional shelter, does that mean only to sleep in, or does that mean for them to reside in that facility on a 24-hour basis?
The program is not designed for folks to be in the building 24/7. It's primarily for overnight shelter.
Now, when you say primarily, could that mean there's another use as well? As I listened to the testimony of Ms. Moore, she stated that people seek shelter in the evening, stay there, and then they can in fact remain on the grounds of that building, can they not?
They can remain on the grounds if they are working with the case management staff that is on duty during the day to help them resolve the challenges that they have to find.
So in other words, they can sleep in the building in the evening, and they can go upstairs and hang around in the main building for the balance of the day. Is that not so?
I take issue with your terminology, "hang around."
Okay. How about with regard to the staff that will be present on that building? Are you aware of how that members of the staff are trained to determine whether or not these people can be accepted?
Objection! This is not her direct testimony. It has no bearing on the same...
Well, it can be best to do it for the record, that her testimony, as generic as it is, has actually no relevance as the matter of the case which is before you.
Mr. Gazarovski, I'm pretty positive, we went over the fact that, speaking on behalf of the board, we're going to find the testimony of the reverend or pastor, I'm sorry, is relevant. If you have any questions regarding her specific testimony, not Ms. Moore, not planning or engineering, please ask those questions.
But you called her as a witness on behalf of this application.
Correct. And at no point, I'm not trying to argue, sir, I did not hear at any point Pastor Sue make any testimony regarding planning, engineering, or have anything to say about Ms. Moore's testimony. You're more than welcome to make a comment at the end, but please, keep the questioning only to Pastor Sue's testimony. If you find it irrelevant, that's fine. Ask some questions about the irrelevant testimony, and then please let us move on.
Okay.
Respectfully, sir.
Why? Have you made, or did you take any effort to determine from the clergy that runs the Church of Christ, and since they are supposedly an applicant in this matter, why they are not using the basement of the church for this result?
Objection! Same problem. Number one is characterization of the question, but we are using the basement of this church. I, maybe I missed something. I thought we had testimony from the architect and Randy Moore that we are putting the 17 beds in the basement, and in fact, Mr. Gazarovski had a lengthy series of questions about the entrance and exit from the basement. So I don't understand this question.
Are the planes before the board right now, is there a copy of it? Did I see it?
I don't have a copy of it, thanks, sir. More importantly, with all due respect, the plans are irrelevant. That's not her testimony.
I would speak to the board. I've seen the planes, and I've questioned them in regard to that. I think the planes reflect, there's nothing on the planes on this particular building that show that it is in any way attached to, made a part of, or accessory to the Church of Christ building, Church of Christ place of worship. Nothing. Absolutely nothing.
I appreciate your comments, sir. Is there a question regarding Pastor Sue's testimony?
Sure. Listening to your testimony, you've given us a lot of figures. Please tell me what specific references you used to come up with those numbers.
I identified those when I mentioned them.
Why me?
I identified those when I mentioned them. The first set of numbers with regard to income statistics is from a well-used site known as the National Low Income Housing Coalition. It's a non, a national...
Excuse me a minute, sir. A national coalition?
It's a national...
What is a national coalition?
Objection! Does she get to answer the question, Ron?
I consider myself a really patient person. I'm not going to let this turn into a circus. Ask the question, allow the witness to answer, and then ask him about it, please.
Okay. With regard to your testimony, do you regard this as a place for housing, or do you regard this as simply a place for people to sleep overnight?
Given the way you phrase that question, I would consider this a place for people to sleep overnight, because the word "housing" implies some sort of permanent arrangement that they're going to stay there indefinitely, and that's not the case.
It's your testimony that the use of the word "housing" can interpret to mean simply transitional or a place to sleep for the night?
No, I think I just said the opposite of that.
Let me ask you this. Have you ever discussed with the clergy of the Church of Christ the issue of this application?
Yes, because the members, the clergy of the Church of Christ, the Church of Christ have been members of the Coalition that I am the president of. So yes, this has been discussed and discussed over and over again for a long period of time, and it was simply that they were the folks who came forward to offer a location.
They offered a location. Now, did you make a determination that you inquired as to whether or not the clergy of the Church of Christ has intended to give a release or a contract with the applicant before the board this evening?
Objection! Beyond the direct testimony.
But she's testifying as an expert about this, right?
No, she's not. She's testifying as an expert.
Okay, she's not testifying as an expert. Thank you.
No, no.
Thank you. I have no further questions. I know there's another attorney here, but I reserve your right to further follow him to his second cross-examination.
Good evening, members of the board. I identified myself last time as Edward Fisk, I give the presentation of objector. Property that is contiguous, adjacent to or right next to the church, that's in question here. Mr. Dassie, I was the one who raised the issue of the applicant not being here at the last meeting we had, not Mr. Gazarovski.
Okay.
It's just a mistake we all make or we deserve. I'm not saying that as disparaging against you. I just want to clarify. But I want to talk to you, Pastor. Which cemetery, seminary did you, seminary did you attend?
Went to the Lutheran Theological Seminary of Philadelph.
Did you graduate with a D.D., doctoral divinity?
No, I have a master's.
You have a master's of divinity. Are you familiar with Princeton Theological Seminary?
Yes, I am.
And if I graduated with a D.D.?
You would come up with a master's of divinity unless you stayed for a doctoral program.
Now, you testified about these people being transient. Mr. Gazarovski asked you about this. Transient means they're coming and going, correct?
I don't remember us using the word transient. I remember us using the word transitional to be able to deal with the reality of what this shelter space is intended to support.
Is that what some people say, that this thing's got other differences? Transient is the same thing, is it not?
No, it is not.
Transitional means somebody's... Transitional means somebody's going to stay somewhere, not leave?
Transient generally means that people are, it generally applies to someone who's just kind of wandering around, okay? Transitional shelter space is an intentionality of a program to move people to permanent housing.
You testified that a lot of these people that you deal with are under a lot of stress and mental problems.
I did not say that.
You said something about mental, I took my...
I said, I said...
May I finish?
One more time?
I said "some."
That's what I said, some of these people are under a lot of stress. Agree?
Yes, but then you added the part about mental problems, and that's where I have to disagree.
Well, permit me if I'm correct, but you said some of them have problems mentally, I wrote it down, that's my copious notice, I...
I know.
So with mental problems and transitional, they come into this facility that you want to build, they come in and they go, correct?
They come and then they go, yes, either when they have finished working through the program, in the grand scheme of things, or on a day-to-day basis, depending on what their daytime activities need to be.
Okay. Did you meet with the neighbors that are adjacent to the property that's in question?
Not as an organization, no.
Did you meet with them individually?
Some.
Could you name them? There are a number of homeowners here, could you tell me which homeowner you met with to tell them what they were planning to do with the property? This is a question.
We did not, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, may I just make this statement? Mr. York can object as a constant objection without interrupting, and I'll accept that as a constant objection to all of the testimony that I'm listening from this witness, but I'm questioning her on her testimony that she just gave and proffered to this board. That's all I'm doing, questioning her on her testimony. So Mr. York can object for the, whatever he wants, but make it without interrupting me.
Okay, I will answer that question by simply saying I was not involved in any activity to be discussing the plans for this facility with the neighborhood.
You're located in Tom River, right, personally?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so you didn't go to any of the neighbors to see what...
Objection, she's already testified, she did not.
No, she said she did. She said she met with people, Mr. York, you're wrong, Mr. York, your objection is constant, and then you're wrong, she said she met with some of them. I asked her the names, isn't that what I did, ask her, just ask her for some names?
You asked me for some names?
Which means you met with people, too.
Well, no, so let me think of the time, okay?
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
There are people who are connected to the coalition and to the other activities that we do between the Housing Coalition and AHA who live in that neighborhood. Did we meet with them? No.
Well, would you agree to me it would be important to meet with neighbors?
Objection. Questions are irrelevant.
You know, if you think attacking me improves your case...
Attorney York, I'm not attacking you.
Can I finish talking?
All right, all right, right. Everybody needs to take a step...
Mr. Chairman, I'm not, Mr. York.
Excuse me, excuse me. Everybody needs to take a step back and relax.
Okay. I address Attorney York as Attorney York, not as party, and I expect the same from Mr. York, Attorney York, sorry. Reverend, you said people are knocking on your door for homeless, correct?
At times, yes.
Could you tell me whether or not you were involved with the flyer that was sent out inviting homeless people to come to 405 Washington Street, that the Resource Center is now open, homeless people come?
Yes.
Were you involved with that?
Yes, it was a coalition flyer.
Well, why would you have to have inviting people if they're already knocking your door down? Why do inviting people come in our neighborhood?
We have approval for, zoning approval for the operation that is existing at the site now.
May I speak with you about that? You testified for a year and a half that this little historic church, the parish house, is separate from the big church, right?
It's a separate physical building, yes.
It's separate physical building. Is that little church being leased back to the big church?
I can't answer that question.
Well, there's an accessory use issue here then, Mr. Gazarovski, Grace, you know what that means?
Objection, not part of her testimony.
All right, people are knocking on your door, yet you put out a flyer inviting people to come to 405 Washington Street. Were you at 405 Washington Street on Wednesday of this week?
I was not.
Were you aware that there was furniture being delivered to that location?
No.
Do you know how many people came?
Sir, not part of her testimony.
Isn't it, Pastor, isn't it true that given the numbers that you reflected in the record, you gave these numbers, 90,000 median?
Uh-huh.
Isn't it true that no matter how many people you put in there, they're never going to be able to afford a house in Tom River?
No.
How are they going to afford it? Hit the lottery?
Supportive housing, programs that are intended to provide additional financial support, depending on what they qualify for, yes.
Are you telling me that the government taxpayers are going to get 90,000 somebody to buy a home?
No.
Where's the money coming?
That's a median income.
Where's the money coming from to buy a home in Tom River?
For these programs that we're talking about?
Any person that comes into the homeless shelter you say can't afford, it's affordability issue, right?
Primarily.
That was your turn, affordability. Would you agree with me that none of the people, 17, coming in there are not millionaires? Correct?
Yes.
These are people without jobs, basically, medium jobs, 90,000 a year?
Many of them are people with jobs, but many of those jobs are minimum wage.
Minimum wage, so we're talking about affording a $90,000 home in Tom River proper?
Okay. Clarification, clarification, $90,000 is median income that I mentioned, it's not the price of a home. As far as to answer the question that you're asking me, which has to do with how will they afford a home at all?
Yes.
Okay?
Yes.
It's a combination of their working, their wages, and other supportive programs that provide additional funding for them to be in housing.
In Tom River?
In Tom's River.
Are you saying that they can afford to buy a house in Tom River with assistance?
Objection, that's not her testimony.
Well, what is her testimony? I just heard her say that with assistance.
Listen to the questions, the answers to the questions...
Was that there's people that's going to afford a home in Tom River?
That's not what you said.
I do not believe that was her, the pastor's testimony, sir.
You gave the figures that you obtained from trem somewhere?
It's a national resource that identifies median incomes, and it's backed up by census data.
All right, I did write down in my, that the homeless was a problem of affordability. My question merely is, are there any homes in Tom River that these people will be able buy by working at $17 an hour?
Potentially, yes.
At $17 an hour?
There are additional financial resources that are provided to be able to bridge the gaps.
Are you talking about the $12.5 million that was given to the county?
I have no idea what you're mentioning.
While you work, oh, you work with HAD Housing and the people that already received millions of dollars from the county for homeless, are you...
Objection.
She said that she was aware of the homeless need and affordability, I'm merely asking her, are you aware that there are other agencies already grabbing millions of dollars for homeless? Are you aware of that, that's all?
I'm not aware of what you're speaking about.
Okay. Are you aware of the company called HAD Home?
HAD Home?
Well, let's see if I'm pronouncing it correctly, HAD Corp.
Yes, I am.
And HAD Corp has already received money, correct?
Yes.
And that's for homeless, correct?
Yes.
And that's in the county, correct?
And they work with us, yes.
And they work with you?
Mm-hmm.
So they're going to have homeless centers also?
We actually refer people to the programs that HAD Corp has that have received that funding.
So there are alternatives for homeless other than in our neighborhood?
No, there are no alternatives for places to stay for people in emergency situations where they have no roof over their head.
You're aware of the facility right now where people are coming in for a year and a half, correct? At the church, not your church, but that, the applicant, not the applicant, we're talking about a separate building, are we not?
We're talking about a building that is part of the Christ Church property, yes.
The building then has to be leased, or something along that, you don't know?
The church owns the building, the church owns all of that property.
And that little parish house?
Yes.
So my question is, are you familiar with the case that Mr. York, our Attorney York, referenced to this board the last time, St. John's, that evangelical Lutheran church of...
Objection, this is so far beyond her direct testimony and beyond the scope of anything that the pastor...
With all due respect, we're not in a court of law, but if we were, a lot of the things that Mr. York or Attorney York has objected would never even fly over the board. There's a 901 authentication which I'd like to show this pastor.
Let's do it this way.
Mr. Vazdaki?
I just want to know...
Mr. Vazdaki?
She's where?
Mr. Vazdaki?
Yes.
She's not an attorney, she's not an expert witness, she's not a legal witness, okay? You can cross-examine her on her direct testimony, I think asking her about case law and things like that, I don't believe that that's appropriate.
Okay, but are you familiar that churches that house people already? Homeless people?
Are there churches in places that house people already? Yes, do I know of any in this area? No.
But if you're housing in the church, you wouldn't need to come here for a variance waiver, would you?
Objection, she's, that's a legal question. She has no ability to provide legal testimony?
Asking for legal testimony, Mr. Chairman.
Well, Mr. Vazdaki, it is the same thing, you're asking for a legal interpretation from her as to whether or not a variance would be required.
Are you familiar with Brightstone?
In Namon.
You don't know if they're a company that also supplies housing for homeless people?
I don't know the details of the services they provide, I do know that they're one of the agencies that we refer people to when they come to the basement.
Have you visited the church yourself personally lately?
This building here that we're talking about?
Yes, that we're talking about, do we identify it as a parish house?
I'm in there several times a month, yes.
Okay, I'm just going to have for identification purposes. Could you tell me, does that look like the parish house building? Let me show it, Attorney York first, and Mr. Dasey too, please. I don't have a problem, Mr. Dasey.
Okay.
I would have it marked for identification purposes, objector, water. Am I going too fast? Mr. Dasey, I represent to you that this is a photograph that was taken on Wednesday with a picture of the little parish house with an individual standing on my client's property. Mr. Chairman, could I publish it? I'd like to publish it after we identify it with the witness, please. Pastor Sue?
Yes, sir.
I'm at the Princeton Theological, I'm not here.
Congratulations. Excuse me, excuse me. You're going to speak, you're not speaking on the microphone.
Oh, that was just a colloquy between the two of you.
Yes, so your question is?
Okay, my question is, do you see adjacent property right over here? That's not all parish property here, or pointing with a little yellow or, that's orange, some sort of a...
Okay, I don't know where the plot line is, but I'll trust you on that.
Okay, do you see a picture of a gentleman right there?
Yes.
All right.
Mr. Vazdaki, if I can just ask you, the right of the picture, the left of the picture, you're standing there. When you're standing there, the right of the picture, the left of the picture, when you're standing there?
Oh, I can identify that, yeah. We could mark it, we could mark it. I don't mind marking it. You want to mark this, Pastor, I'm probably saying, right here, drawing an arrow. You see that gentleman there?
I see there's a person standing there, yes.
Are you aware that people like that go across my client's property on a regular basis coming to the parish?
No, I'm not.
Are you aware that the people that go to the parish, I'll show you another photograph. Mr. Attorney York?
I would ask at this point for some offer of proof as to how...
Yeah, yeah.
Can I, can I actually finish? Is there a shot that I could finish? An offer of proof as to how this relates to her direct testimony.
She just said that she goes there on a regular basis all the time.
No, she doesn't.
She said she goes there monthly, she goes a couple times a month, that was... Okay, couple times a month. That's not regular. Mr. Vazdaki, going to your desk every day is regular. Going to the church once a week for three times a month, that's not regular. Regular is... I'll rephrase it, I'll rephrase it. You testified you go to the church, how frequent?
I repeat my earlier statement several times a month, it's not scheduled.
Several times a month, I said frequent. So several times a month, you're familiar with this area?
I'm generally in the building, yes.
Okay, that's where they have the drug and alcohol rehab for a year and a half?
There is no drug and alcohol rehab there.
No more?
There never was.
Could you tell me, never mind, I'll draw that with the picture.
So, can we get back to my objection, what is the offer of proof as to how this relates to her direct testimony?
She testified as to transitional people coming on the property. Part of, partly, may I finish?
I haven't said a word.
Well, I want you to... But part of the argument is, is that this board has to look at the negative impact on the case law, as to what impact negatively is going to occur and has occurred already in the neighborhood, and she can testify to that. But she can't, she says she doesn't. She says she goes there. So I want to show that these people that come to her housing are not merely, you know, people that are down and out, but they're transients, people that come and go.
So my comment is, she can't testify to that, you're showing her pictures of people on a property. She doesn't know where they're coming from, where they're going, who they are, or what they're doing, and it wasn't part of her direct testimony, it's irrelevant.
She testified she goes there, I can show her where they're going, they're going right into the church. That's my offer of proof.
Mr. Vazdaki, I mean, they weren't personally observed by the witness, I think you could probably ask her if she's ever observed people going over the property line from your property, from your client's property to the church's property.
Right, yeah.
I'm sorry?
No, go ahead.
But to show her pictures and saying, do you know where this person's going, I don't know that that's fair, because I don't know that the pastor...
I guess I could call it, she testified and Mr. Dasey will have the satisfaction to testify as to what is occurring in the area today negatively, today, the president. Because Mr. York in the transcript said to this board, Mr. York said, Attorney York said, in the testimony that he proffered, that there has been no negative impact in the neighborhood, that's not true. He testified that...
All right, gentlemen, gentlemen, the issue here right now is the pastor's cross-examination, okay? So if you want to ask her if she has seen anyone walking from your property to the church property, that's a fair question.
Fair enough, fair enough. Have you observed a number of individuals coming in and outside of church on a regular basis? Have you?
I have seen people standing in front of the church building waiting for agency days, when there were agency days, for the door to be opened, yes.
And waiting for the door to open, it could be 10 to 15 people at a given time, right?
I generally haven't seen more than half a dozen, so I can't answer that, those numbers.
I'll show the half a dozen people that wait outside the front of the porch on the church, in the boat. See that church right there?
In front of the parish house, yes.
Parish house. All right, I don't want to be redundant, but there's a basement that Mr. Gazarovski asked you about, correct?
Yes.
And that basement is, how many square feet you don't know?
I don't know.
Do you think it could be, describing this room, how big is the basement in juxtaposition with...
Objection, she's testified she doesn't know.
But she can give us an estimated approximation.
If she doesn't know, she can't.
I understand the relevance of that, Mr. Dasey.
It's relevant to having people in the basement sleeping there.
Okay, Pastor Sue, with respect to the size of this room, could you maybe say it's a half, quarter, three quarters?
From where I'm standing?
To the best of your ability.
From where I'm standing, from that wall to that wall, roughly.
This way.
This way.
A quarter?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Are you familiar with the 969 square feet that's proposed for the waiver? The size of it?
Objection. It's beyond the scope of the direct testimony.
Well, again, Mr. Chairman, we're not in court where we have direct and cross-examination based on.
The premise of your questioning though, sir, respectfully should be to the direct testimony of the witness.
Well, she testified about the facility when Mr. Gazarovski asked her about it. She testified that she's familiar with the facility, but she goes there not on a regular basis, but on a monthly basis. She testified she goes there. So I wanted to know, based on the new facility that they want to build, how's that square to the description of this facility?
And she didn't testify, she said.
A proxy.
When questioned by Mr. Gazarovski, she said she didn't know the square footage, and she has not testified about the facility and its square footage.
May I say one thing? We're not in a court of law. If you were, the speaking objections are totally.
If you make it abundantly clear, we understand that you find that there's a problem with the jurisdiction of the board in relation to the application.
No, I don't find the jurisdiction with the board at all. I find that the board has a duty to find that there's no negative impact on the neighborhood where they're directly adjacent to. And no future negative impact, because that's the law.
And respectfully, from where I sat, if I could, Mr. Dastky, real quick. From where I sat today, tonight, sir, I do not believe Pastor Sue made any representation against the positive or negative criteria of the application.
Right, that's what I was gonna ask you about, but anyway. The funding that you're receiving, who gets the money?
Objection. Beyond the scope of direct testimony.
I just want to know, who gets the money? The church, the affordable housing people?
I don't think that she testified as to funding at all.
As to the funding?
I don't believe she did.
Nope.
Okay, but you're wrong. I'd like to publish this one photo that she did reference. If I may, to publish it.
This is oh one, right?
Yes. Your testimony was not that every individual has a single profile, correct?
Correct.
And that went back to where I talked to you about someone may come in with a backpack to the search.
We don't search people who come in with backpacks to the DSA program. I understand that as it's open as a shelter, there will be a procedure for how to handle people's belongings as they come in. I don't know the details of the procedure.
Is it true that you may even take in daily appointments? Some people like that term, but you're gonna house them if they're homeless? If they're homeless.
Objection, it's beyond the scope of the direct testimony.
And Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna join Mr. Gazarovski in. Her testimony is probably irrelevant to anything before the board. The board is to decide whether or not the waiver is to be appropriate or not.
Opinion noted?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I have no other questions at this stage, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks. Follow. Respectfully, Mr. Gazarovski, we're gonna hear from the board. And we'll swing back around to you.
I respect that.
Thank you, sir. Board members, any questions to the applicant?
Yes, I have one.
Please.
Your opinion, is it an inherent beneficial use? It's the kind of thing that we have been doing as churches since the dawn of time. Is it inherently beneficial use?
Yes.
In my opinion?
Yeah.
Yes, it is, because I have a place for people to be, in her lay opinion.
That's a lay opinion.
Well, I think the term is beneficial use.
Sir, respectfully, it's the board's time, please.
It's my time.
Oh, you ask? Well, I can't write it down.
Yeah, take a minute, we're gonna.
Well, I heard the term beneficial use, that's right.
In her lay opinion, please, have a seat. We'll swing back around, I promise. Any other board members? Mr. Stow?
Pastor Sue? Couple of things. I have a piece of paper in front of me that says it's the board adjustments agenda for tonight. Tell me if I'm reading this wrong, because I think this is part of public record, that the approval for tonight for the D1 variance is for 949 square feet, of which will be a homeless shelter addition with seventeen beds connected to the existing outreach office of the Church of Christ. Is this not the same building we're speaking about at the Church of Christ as the parish house?
Yes, it is the same building.
Okay, because I keep hearing said to you numerous times that it's not part of the church, it's a different building. So I want to be sure that the paperwork that I have is what we're talking about and not what some other person is trying to juxtapose tonight, that we're not talking about the parish home at the 949 square feet, seventeen beds. That's my first question.
I need you to clarify that for me a little bit. Let me say something and then you tell me if you think we're still confused. It is a parish house building that sits on Washington Street that is owned by Christ Episcopal Church. That building is what is to be renovated to be able to provide shelter for seventeen people in the basement of the parish house building. The nine hundred and something square foot addition, it's my understanding.
Sit. I can see you're getting ramped up. This is board question.
I'm gonna stand closer, it's not gonna do.
Respectfully, I think a little space is in order.
You directing me to sit down?
I'm directing you to stay away from the witness, yes.
I'm not.
Like, I'm not gonna argue with you, okay?
The nine hundred and something square addition is to provide for restroom space and accessibility and an elevator, because the building in and of itself is not accessible as it is.
Okay, so that clarifies that we are talking about a building on the church property where this is all going to take place. So it's all part of the church facilities?
Yes.
That's what I want to make sure. Because I keep hearing other terms and I know what I'm reading here, and I want to make sure that we're talking about the same piece of property on Washington Street that is in front of us. My next question is, Pastor Sue, in your fire at your church, the day that the fire started, I was the first one there, I got you out of the church to open the door for me.
That was.
Now, I heard Mr. Gazarovski trying to ask you why your church wasn't habitable for this. I guess, Mr. Gazarovski, does understand that your church is a nonprofit that needs to live off of the funding by the parish people to rebuild that facility, and that's why at this time, for six years now, I believe, since that fire, why that has not been reconstructed?
There were, if I may, just real briefly.
Yes.
Those of us involved in the coalition, particularly those of us who are clergy, have been bouncing around whose church could possibly volunteer to host what we're talking about. Christ Church was the first one to step up with availability. It's as simple as that.
Thank you. No further questions.
Mr. Rollin?
I have two questions. You had just mentioned that people will be searched if and when it becomes a shelter. Why are they not searched now to prevent any issues?
All I can say is we are aware of safety and security, but the nature of the people that are coming and going on a daily basis, we don't feel the need to be searching people.
Okay. My other question to you was about going back to the median income for a dual income, which, and not to, I'm not trying to stir the pot. I understand where the attorneys are coming from, and I'm just trying to get my head around it. You said that it's a thirty day intended stay for people who are working either a single minimum wage job, possibly two, or a full-time job, and whatever the situation may be. My question then becomes, how can you, how can you consider a thirty day stay reasonable? And I'm speaking as somebody who, I'm a single income household, and I know it's difficult, but how are you guaranteeing that the majority of these people will only be there for thirty days if they are not making enough money to support the household?
I'll just say that that's not my area of expertise. I can say, though, that some people will stay less, some people will stay longer. It depends on what additional program support they're eligible for, and when housing is available, they're moved into that housing. So it varies based on the need.
Excuse me. As well, going in, staying on that topic, you had mentioned that there was other funding for these people to help them out, which then they would be able to afford someplace to live. And I'm just wondering, would they put them, is it to buy homes, is it to rent apartments? Like, is there, again, as a single income household, you know, and I know I struggle, I'm just curious as to how long and how far their money would go that they would receive afterwards to help them stay not homeless.
Okay. There are supportive housing programs that allow low-income people to live there for much less than what would normally be expected on the normal housing market. There are programs that provide supplemental income or first month's rent, things like that, to get them over the hurdles of being able to get into housing. It's all dependent on what their presenting situation is, and it's like a decision tree. You bounce through the different programs that are available based on what their situation is. There are very few of them are going to be expected to be able to then just buy outright buy a home. Most of these folks will transition into supportive housing or a rental situation for a period of time, and then go from there.
Thank you.
Any other board members? With that, let's take some questions from the public, please. Any members of the public have a question regarding the witness's testimony? I'd just like to reiterate, these are questions and not comments. Sir, please step forward.
Name is John Gonzalez. I live at 406 Washington Street. I live directly across the street from the facility. You know how to spell it. How distant would you say Alameda Drive is from?
Could you use the microphone, sir?
Oh.
Please, thank you.
How distant would you say Alameda Drive is from Christ Episcopal Parish House?
It's a little over mine.
Okay. And when you said you dealt with a homeless population in Camden, and that was representative, we'll say, of the Camden facility, and now you're dealing with a population in Toms River Ocean County, and that's representative of this population, is that, are you referring to race?
No. I'm referring to situations of poverty.
And not race?
No.
Okay. Whatever that documentation, whatever was sent out, come visit 405. Oh, by the way, I've had people knock at 406, because they said they had to go to 406. That's, it's irrelevant, just let you know. Okay. There's apparent conflict in testimony between what you just said and what was previously said. What was previously said, and I believe Ms. Moore said it, she said that there are counseling services on site, and if these people that are not being serviced on site by these counseling services today, they are going to off-site counseling services. And I believe that this was directed towards substance abuse and/or mental health issues, unless I read something into it that was not said. Does anyone recall this, what was said?
Well, sir, at this time, it's a question for the pastor.
Okay, anyway, the bottom line here is a conflict of testimony.
What's the question?
The question is, are there drug and, excuse me, substance abuse or mental health counseling activities being conducted on site?
No, we refer people to the agencies that are the professionals in that kind of care.
Thank you.
Those are AA meetings and NA meetings?
Yeah, there's a lot of them.
Folks, in the back, please.
As on site, it was in that building.
In the back, please.
It's not NA counseling?
It's not therapy.
No.
Excuse me.
In the back, please.
My name is Patty Kelleher Thompson. I live at sixteen Magnolia Lane, adjacent to the property. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
I just, I wondered why, again, you came here today was basically, am I correct, in telling us the plight of homeless and how much it would cost and all of that? Are you an expert in that, I guess, is what I'm, I know, expert.
Yeah, expert is a relative term. The reason that I was asked was because the coalition has been involved in this effort since the beginning. I happen to be the president, I know the history, and I understand, at least at a high level, what the needs are of the folks that we're working with.
Yes, and I would say, I don't think any of us are in disagreement over that. My, is it true, though? And this has been, this has been batted around. Is it true that the future plans for this site include affordable homes and/or tiny houses?
I haven't.
Objection.
Why is it objected? Why? She is the president of the Toms River Housing and Home Coalition that is located at 405 Washington Street. And if you don't know, then you don't know, and that's fine.
I have no idea.
Okay, thank you. It would, maybe the next time, Mr. York, it would benefit if we had the clergy from Christ Church, since they're the neighbors, and this is who you called. All you call, Simon, that might be who you want to call.
Wait, 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 before you come forward, Mr. Williams, did you want?
Excuse me. Paul Williams, Broad Street, Toms River. Before you, how much notice did you know that you were gonna be here tonight, Dastky?
Objection. It's absolutely irrelevant. Any notice she was given by the attorney, that's attorney-client privilege.
Mr. Chairman, it is relevant, but it certainly is privileged information.
Whenever you, whenever you were asked or told that you were gonna come here tonight to testify, was there, did you know what you were gonna testify about? Okay, I see you're winding up, Mr. York, go ahead.
No, she can answer.
Sure.
I had an idea of the things that I felt I needed to testify about based on the overall conversation and my relationship to this particular program.
Now, when you say your relationship to this particular program, I'm trying really hard not to ask questions that are gonna be objected to and that are gonna be dismissed as irrelevant very quickly, because it's not a part of her direct testimony. It's concerning, because we, the public, didn't know that she was coming to testify. We didn't know who was coming to testify. All we knew was who was gonna be the witness. Unlike in a court of law, we didn't have the opportunity to be briefed on who this witness was, what they might testify to. Nevertheless, every question, and I get it, some of them, I get the consternation, but it's difficult, as a member of the public who is not, does not have the benefit of a legal education, it's difficult for myself, and I can imagine for my fellow members in our community, to be able to come here and ask questions without having Mr. York ready to pounce about it being irrelevant, and then having Mr. Dastky with the confirmation of the board tell us that it's not relevant, when it's an area that we would like to explore to help the board get some extra information. So, that's why I asked if she knew, or how much notice she had, because she had opportunity to prepare. We didn't have an opportunity to prepare.
Mr. Chairman, at this point.
Harvey, if I could. I understand your point and concern, Mr. Williams. As long as I've been on the board, it's gone on fifteen years now, the public has never been given advance notice of who an applicant chooses to call. We don't know as the board, and certainly you guys don't know as part of the public. You're free from, speaking only as the chairman of the court, you're free to ask any question that you like, although the questions that you should be asking are pertaining to the direct testimony. So, we're only cutting you off because it's not pertaining to the direct testimony. You're free to ask a question, and there's been objections and outbursts on both sides which are weighing on the board just as much as it is on the public. So, I can only direct you to ask a question, and. So, I can only direct you to ask a question, and if it's not pertaining to the direct testimony, the warden can't consider the question. Am I wrong, Mr. Dastie?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I understand, and I agree with what you're saying, like typically, nobody gets noticed who's going to show up, including you. But relevance is relevant.
Ms. Williams, rather than waste valuable time...
I don't think we're wasting time, and I'm trying to make sure that this board is aware of the perspective that we're not getting any leeway whatsoever. Mr. York is going to jump up and down, he's going to interrupt people in the middle of their questioning, it's going to be co-signed by Mr. Dastie, and in many instances by this board. It's frustrating, because we are concerned not about homeless shelter or not. It's not about that, at least not for me, not for some people that I've been speaking to recently. It's about a divergence, and the floodgate that could open if this application is granted.
Respectfully, I see your point, but perhaps those questions are better asked of a person who can testify to the opening of the floodgates, planning, engineering, not a person who's basically speaking about potential need.
Right.
I understand your concern, I get it. I mean, as a board member, we get an engineering memo, planning memo, and then, you know, whatever develops as part of the normal course of an application is sort of the way it is, and we only get it a few days, so we're not that far ahead of you.
Right.
So, I encourage you to ask the questions.
The concern, though, is that as I've listened to the testimony, and correct me if I'm wrong, anybody, particularly Pastor Jones, Jones, correct?
Pastor Sue.
Pastor Sue, I apologize.
Whatever works.
The concern I have is that when her testimony began, she said that she was here on behalf of the agency and to speak about it. But then when she's asked questions about the "it," although the "it" is wide and vast, there's objections, and the objections are upheld. But we can't ask her questions about the "it" that she says in her direct testimony that she was here to testify about. All right?
Mr. Dastie.
Mr. Chairman, the objections that were sustained were outside, I believe were outside the scope of the direct testimony, but I think it's enough with the...
Speak up, please.
Enough with the academic conversations, ask the questions. I mean, we're just having an academic conversation, there's other people that want to ask questions. Mr. Williams, if you have a question of Pastor Sue, please ask it.
I have a lot of questions, but as the learned attorneys know much better than me, including Mr. Dastie, cross-examination is an art form, and you have to be able to know where you can draw, without being objected to all the time, without knowing whether or not you're walking into an uncharted territory, or a prohibited territory.
Sir, this is not a federal murder trial.
Correct, it's not, because the thing is, way that Mr. York jumps up and down with objections.
Ask his question, and then it'll be objected to or answered. Ask what everybody's...
Because some of my questions are questions that have been asked and not allowed to be answered. For example, the "it" that she's, in her direct testimony, the "it" that she said she's here to testify about, are questions about the day-to-day operations of the proposed homeless shelter. The only questions that I have, and I won't belabor this much longer, because I think I've made my point very clear, because I'll wrap it up later when it's time for public comment of where I stand, but I will ask this question. Pastor Sue, early, the very beginning of your testimony, you, and forgive me, I don't mean this disrespectfully at all, but you appeared to pontificate about the issue of homelessness and the need for it. When you were testifying, was every bit of the information that you were testifying to based on your personal observations, your personal experience, or hearsay, I can say, you may have read off of a website, hearsay conversations that you may have had with other people and other colleagues? Just one or two. Was it all direct knowledge, or was any part of it hearsay?
I testified to direct knowledge, and some of my knowledge and insight sent me to places where I could get the legitimate numbers to represent what I was trying to exploit.
So, I'll ask you again, because I'm not asking whether or not it's knowledge, I'm asking whether or not it's based on personal knowledge from your observations.
Yes.
Observations, the facts that you were testifying to were based on your personal observations, not things that you've read somewhere or that you heard from somewhere else?
Correct.
Thank you. Sir, I think before you come up, there's a person who has not yet spoken, and we're going to go back to our professionals, who I skipped.
No, I didn't skip, I can look after John.
No, our professionals.
Oh, I'm sorry. Joanne Patekko, B.A.C.A.T.C.O., 410 Washington Street. Pastor Sue, I have a couple of questions about the people who will be staying in the shelter. So, if I'm understanding this correctly, the people who are going to be there are headed towards a hopefully permanent home, and this is the transition where they're staying until everything gets settled, is that correct?
That's the intention, yes.
Okay, so, the people coming, they are originally coming through the Toms River Homeless Coalition that's currently operating in, as the outreach center in the parish hall, is that correct?
They're coming through the program that we partner in managing, but it's the Affordable Housing Alliance who provides those specific services.
So, anyone who comes to stay at the shelter has already been cleared through some other agency, and they are on their way to getting permanent housing, they just may be waiting for paperwork to be completed or things like that, is that accurate?
That's accurate, yes.
Okay. So, they originally got through the Affordable Housing, however they got there, is the, I heard someone reference a flyer, is the flyer, is that the way people get to the outreach center? They learn about this, and then that's where they start making the steps to get to permanent housing?
That's one of the ways that people get information, is the flyer, but we, the Coalition, one of our primary businesses is to create partnerships, and so there are a lot of agencies that are referring people to each other based on when they come in our door, or they make a phone call, no matter whose agency it is, they're referring them to the Affordable Housing Alliance at the program here at the Housing Center, based on, largely based on, the reality that the AHA is providing two primary services on behalf of the county, and whenever somebody needs to fit into those particular activities, that's largely why they're coming, okay? And then for anything else, we refer them elsewhere. And I'm going to, Randy, please correct me if I'm wrong, but it's the Coordinated Entry Program for the county and the Rapid Re-Housing Program for the county, correct?
Right, the honor of them.
Okay, so I just want to make sure, so the people staying there probably have jobs, they may be minimum wage jobs, but they probably have a job in order to qualify for upcoming housing?
I wouldn't know the percentage, but I'm going to say not all of them would. It's going to be based on what programs they qualify for, whether they have a job or not.
Okay. I'm just trying to get a general idea of what's actually kind of going on. So, the shelter is closed during the day, but if there are people there who are still working through the process, they are going, they will be on-site working outreach house with people working to move along?
Potentially, yes.
Potentially.
They may be referred to or taken to other locations for other services.
Okay.
Or to go to work.
Or they, right, that's, and let me just see if there's anything else I was unclear about. I think that's it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, just real quick, as we're going to take a quick 10-minute break, several of the members have asked for a quick break, so take a quick 7-minute break, we'll come back at 8:40-ish, 8:40, and we can meet. Records, I think we left off where anyone in the public had already asked their first round of questioning, is that correct? Sure, come on up. Hopefully, we all had a chance to take a break, take a step back, reduce the temperature of the room a little bit.
Trisha Knowetij, 508 Hollywood Avenue.
I'm sorry, what's your last name?
J.N.O.E.T.I.J. I have a question, is this going to be a worship homeless shelter, are we going to perform worship services?
Absolutely not.
Not?
That's nothing to do with what the business of the churches outside, that this is trying to provide a service to the community, it's not about preaching and praying sometimes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sorry, what's your first name?
Say your name again.
What was your first name? I didn't get your first.
Oh, Trisha, T.R.
You're not going to give your name.
508 Hollywood Avenue. Was it Hollywood?
Yeah, 508 Washington.
Melissa, Chris needs it as well. What, the name?
I have to write it down in my notes.
So does Chris.
What was the last name?
Oh, I'm sorry, Conini, I think.
All right, I'll get it.
If I go N.E., do you want? If you don't.
It's okay.
Okay. I did not have a chance to ask our board professionals if they had any questions after the board members, so Miss Hill, you're up.
I might be questioned the opportunity.
And you will, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just have one kind of question, just as it relates to our review of our, as it relates to operations. You don't actually set the operations, you just help facilitate the company that comes in.
Correct. My organization do not. We provide hospitality, we provide phone reception, reception at the door, all of that kind of support. We manage the agency days, we have other agencies come in, but we do not manage or interact with the direct program services that are funded through the county for AHA.
So, when you come to the site, you visit, you know, several times a month, do you interact mostly with the staff that's currently working there, or are they in meetings with the CEO that you guys schedule meetings?
I tend to interact with...
And issues?
Sorry, yeah. No, go ahead.
Just like when you come to the facility, what normally do you do when you come to the facility?
Okay. Normally, I come to the facility, I'm speaking to our services director, I'm interacting with our volunteers, providing any support I can, and I'm getting to know the people that were serving.
Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Weiser.
I really, at this point, Mr. Chairman, don't have any additional questions of this witness. Anything I would have would be planning-related, and she's not planning.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Dastie.
No questions, sir.
Okay. It seems as we are on to round two, Mr. Gazarovski.
And I apologize, you think a little bit disruptive, I can't help it sometimes.
Understood, sir.
Maybe I have just a couple of follow-up questions. A question was asked of you about, I believe, whether religious activity would take place in this facility, and I believe your answer is no, is that correct?
It's correct.
Now, as it's presently operating, without the shelter being there, there is no religious activity taking place there at that time as well?
No, there is not.
No. You also asked a question about the need for this type of use. I believe testified that there was a meeting of the leaders or trustees or clergy of several houses who worship in that Church of Christ volunteered, correct?
The Church of Christ volunteered to provide the shelter, or attempt to provide the shelter, yes. It was not a specific clergy group that meant, that met.
Right.
It was the Coalition that met, of which there are many agencies involved, there are several churches connected to it, but it is broader than just a religious organization.
Okay. Are you aware of whether or not there's any type of a written agreement between the applicant and the Church of Christ?
No.
Objection. Your objection, Mr. York. The applicant is the Church of Christ.
I understand, so?
You said, is there a written agreement between the applicant and the Church of Christ? That would be an agreement between the Church of Christ and the Church of Christ.
The Church, she also testified that there would be no religious activities taking place in this facility, so if there are no religious activities taking place in this activity, how can Church of Christ be a bona fide applicant?
I had high hopes for round two. I had high hopes for the questioning for round two. Mr. Dastie?
In this spirit of Christmas and the holidays, gentlemen, Mr. Gazarovski, you asked if the applicant had a written agreement with itself, which I don't believe was the question you intended to ask, unless perhaps, I don't know what I'm talking about, I think the question you probably meant to ask was a written agreement between the Church of Christ... Hang on one second, sir, just one second, I'm trying to help you. Between the Church of Christ...
You can use the microphone if you need it, that's why it's there.
Sure. You had asked that if...
Could you do that?
Great, because I don't know. So, you had asked the applicant, or Pastor Sue, whether the applicant had a written agreement with itself, that I don't think is what you meant. Yes, you did.
I did, I asked, I think they had a written agreement with the Church of Christ.
And the applicant is, the applicant is the Church of Christ?
Correct.
All right? So, anyway, again, I'm trying to help you. I believe what you meant to ask was whether there was a written agreement between the Church of Christ and Affordable Housing Alliance, and Pastor Sue testified about an hour ago that she didn't know.
Let's go, let's keep on going, sir. My understanding is your presence here this evening, Mr. York's testimony, is you were called by...
Use the microphone, sir.
That's why, my understanding is you're being called by Mr. York this evening to give testimony in regard to this particular application, are you not?
My understanding of my testimony this evening is to identify my relationship to what is already going on, my relationship to the potential services that we'd like to provide there, and the need for the facility.
Isn't all of your testimony thus far really generic about the need or the unaffordability of housing in the immediate Toms River Ocean County area?
I'm not sure how that's super generic, but yes.
You should testify that basically it's difficult for a person who's earning $90,000 a year to secure or purchase a home or get a mortgage.
That is not what I said.
What did you say?
I said it is hard for somebody who doesn't make a living wage to afford housing in this area.
You said buy a house, I think you said buy a house, is it?
Buy housing.
Well, it's not specifically...
One at a time?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I did not specifically speak to only purchasing a home, I spoke to finding housing in general.
Well, what does being able to buy a home or finding housing in general have to do with this application?
Pastor, if you can answer the question, you can, if not, that's fine.
Simply put, we're trying to provide short-term transitional shelter for people who are finding it difficult to find housing, so that we can help them to overcome that challenge.
So, even if a person is working, earning a living, and can afford to go to a motel or live with a relative, you're saying it's your goal to simply provide this housing to them?
I would answer that question by saying no.
Okay.
These are people that can't afford to be anywhere. Many of the people who are homeless in this area are put up in motels by the county, by funds that are provided through nonprofits and other agencies, because there's no other way for them to find a place to stay.
How do you say that? Have you made any intent to meet with the applicant as to this particular use, to acquire from them the procedures that they utilize, whether it be background checks, the paperwork, and filling out forms? filling out forms as to how they would accept people?
No, I have not.
So here you are before this board, and you're giving testimony urging them to approve this application, but yet you on their behalf has not made what intent to determine how in fact they operate, how they determine who is suitable for getting this housing provided. Isn't that true? Yes, any questions?
I'll be happy to answer the question. It's not our responsibility. I trust the Affordable Housing Alliance and their expertise, they were hired by the county to provide those services and devise and manage the plan for how the building will be operated. If it was my responsibility, I'd know every single detail, but it's not.
So you have done absolutely nothing there?
Objection.
Wow.
Let me answer this question. You know about this particular, well, not the applicant, but the agency that's going to operate this facility, whether they have a similar facility located in the area, and I believe there's testimony that there's such a facility in Vermont. Are you aware of that?
Objection, it's beyond the scope of the direct testimony. She did not testify to AHA or any of their activities.
Well, you know what, and I respect Mr. Shirk's testimony, but his comment, but if she's urging this board to approve this particular application...
Use the mic.
And this applicant has a facility, or this end user has a facility someplace else, why is that not relevant to ask how they operate?
I, gentlemen, hang on, I think Pastor Sue can answer the question if she's aware of another facility.
I am aware of the other facility, I was here when Randy gave her testimony, and my recollection is she testified all of that information.
Now, let me ask you this question. You're here before this board, you're on the road, you're urging their approval, did you make any attempt to visit that facility and see how it operates?
I have visited that facility when we were looking to partner with AHA in the first place.
How many times?
I think twice.
Okay. Now, with regard to this particular facility, have you gotten a list of potential employees who will operate within this facility?
No, I have not.
Have you made any inquiry as to what educational background they must have, or what experience they must have before they could become employees at this facility?
Mr. Chairman, I'll speak softly. I object, because she is not here to testify as to the operations of the facility. We've had prior witnesses, this is beyond the scope of her testimony.
But I would like to know, other than you're talking about some generic reference to homelessness and the like, why is she here? Is she here to urge this board?
My assumption, sir, is she is by the request of the applicant.
Yeah.
And she's here on the request of the applicant, which should be sufficient.
She's here on behalf of the applicant, who is Christ Church, who will not be operating the facility, will not have employees in the facilities, other than to lend their name to it, nothing else. That's what this is all about.
Mr. Chairman, Pastor Sue has testified why she's here and put on her testimony. She has indicated that she is not involved in the day-to-day operations. Mr. Gazarovski, I don't think you can keep asking her that, her answer's not going to change. So you can make your arguments at the end, it's not... Hang on, sir, hang on, sir, it's Christmas time, hang on. So you can make your arguments at the close of the case, as to why you think it's not relevant and why the board shouldn't consider it. The board's already indicated that they're going to hear the testimony, they've heard it, that the board will wait at the end as to give it value or not, but you can't keep asking the same questions about things that she doesn't know anything about.
I'm going to join basically in Mr. Bezdekki's comments, in that her testimony is entirely irrelevant in its entirety, she is stripped from the record. And the bottom line is she's here because Christ Church doesn't have the moral audacity to come before you.
But I think that's out of what Mr. Gazarovski...
Yeah, so we're not going to argue that.
Wait, wait, sir, Mr. Chairman, respect. They have labeled themselves to be the applicant. All they do is perhaps own the building, nothing else.
Sir, you've practiced land use law a long time, I'm sure, there's been plenty of applications where you argued on behalf of the applicant, and the applicant not show up.
Arguing on behalf, well, let me say this, here, the applicant's testimony is crucial, and they hadn't showed up.
I'm going to... Okay. No doubt, sir, please, come up.
I'm going to try and be brief, many attorneys says that they're not going to.
Pastor Shirk.
Wait, wait, before you guys go, please speak into the mic.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now, it's a directional mic, you have to speak into the end of it. Yes, right there, and so that way it gets all regular.
Hold it up like you're holding it.
I kind of figured it out, yeah.
Okay. You testified that this is a business, that you're in, that's your term, sense of business.
I don't recollect that I did, but go ahead and continue, we'll see where you're going.
I like to write down those, you testified it was a business, that it's a business that's making money?
No.
Okay. How about the term juxtaposed used by Mr. Totola? I don't like using that term, sometimes people don't understand it, but what benefit does this applicant make to the community at large? What makes them a benefit to the homeowners there? You know, you've been part of the coalition, right?
Yes.
And the coalition applies homeless housing, all right, correct?
We do not.
Well, the homeless are already receiving county assistance for homelessness, correct?
They are, yes.
Half cores doing the same thing, they receive funding for homeless people, correct?
There are different grants for different purposes, yes.
Homeless, they're all homeless grants.
Yes, but they are different categories within larger...
Okay.
Challenge.
But the homeless are being funded through the taxpayers?
Yeah.
Homers?
Ultimately, yes.
Thank you. So juxtaposed to the benefit that you're bringing, can you tell me what detriment it would be to the community, if any?
Objection.
If you don't?
Objection, she is not a professional planner, that's planning testimony.
Well, you said that the individuals, and you cannot solve the problem of homelessness, that it testified to, right? You can't solve that problem.
You can move people through a process and more people will fall in behind them, yes.
So is this like a revolving thing they do on the show, hold in, held out, 30 days are out, 30 days new in?
Not necessarily, and Randy testified to that, it depends on...
Who's Randy?
Randy Moore, CEO of AHA.
Oh, okay, she's the young lady that testified at the last time.
Correct.
I'm sorry, I know her personally, I know her by Ms. Moore. But you rely on Ms. Moore for testimony, that she gave you a heads up now just now? You asked her a question, she told you the answer?
She clarified the answer because I didn't want to be incorrect.
Right. But would you agree with me, you testified on direct examination that you cannot solve the homeless problem, that that's a fact?
You cannot solve the overall homeless problem, but you can solve it individually for certain individuals and families as you provide appropriate services.
When you say families, are you talking about families and not individuals now? You said family.
You asked me about the problem with homelessness, correct?
What you're dealing with is homeless individuals.
What we're dealing with at this facility will be homeless individuals, yes.
And you cannot solve the problem with homeless individuals on a 30-day basis, you'd agree with me, that, correct? Not on 30 days. You're not going to solve their problems.
We're not attempting to solve the problem in 30 days, we're attempting to give them the first step towards the solving of the problem.
Okay. But you also testified that these individuals that are coming in are not a threat to the community at large, you testified that, I wrote it certainly.
I testified to that, I'd be happy to stay overnight with any of them.
I thought you didn't know who they were.
I beg your pardon?
The people that are coming in, you have their names and addresses and all that information already?
No, I do not.
Well, how do you know you're going to say it's something you don't know? I have no other questions. Oh, I do have one question for the board members. I'm really reluctant to raise this as an issue among the board members, but Mr. Totola may have a bias, and I ask that he be removed from the board, because he's partially involved with Pastor Joy, he rescued her. I'm not saying he's going to be biased in his decision, but if I may...
But if I may, I'll answer it.
I'm not asking for an answer, I'm saying to the chairman, Mr. Totola testified on the record that he rescued Pastor Joy from a burning building. I have a follow-up question to the burning building, could you build on that building that the funds are getting?
There you go.
And another member of the book. This is kind of... This is kind of a follow-up on what Mr. Bezdekki said.
Just state your name.
Forgot my name, I remember.
I did forget, I was stating for the record.
Okay, John Gonzalez, 406 Washington Street. Are you aware of the fact that as currently configured, that parish house cannot be used as a homeless shelter?
Yes.
On your facility, your facility that was damaged, destroyed in a fire, if the funds that are being directed towards the facility at Christ Episcopal, could you construct a homeless outreach, homeless shelter on your facility?
It's not the question that's being asked, and the point being that we would be in this same conversation with the people who live in the neighborhood behind my church.
I will save, I will save my comment on that for my comment session, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other members in the public with a question regarding the testimony? Mr. Williams.
Good evening again, Paul Williams, Pro Street Councilor. Just a, hopefully just a quick question or two. Could you remind us again the name of the organization that you are affiliated with directly?
Tom's River Housing and Home Association.
And you're the president, is that correct?
Yes.
And you testified that your organization works collaboratively with others, or is it just a meeting space of mutual interest?
No, it works collaborative with others. We provide supportive services to the work that AHA is doing at the housing center on behalf of the county, but we also build relationships with other agencies so that we can make referrals for folks and we can provide other support as needed. And to be perfectly honest with you, to try to make things as effective and efficient as we possibly can, because there's a lot of duplication of effort, and there's a lot of people asking for the same funds to do similar work, so we try to collaborate as much as possible to minimize all of that.
So you brought up, you brought up a, an interesting term there, you said, kind of everyone's trying to get the same funding.
Sometimes.
Yeah. In your experience, have you worked, let's say, in a case management capacity, and I'm using that term very loosely?
Myself personally, no.
Have you worked in any capacity where you have attempted to connect the person in need with services?
In my role as a pastor and in my relationship to the coalition, yes.
Okay. Are you, are you familiar with the practices of the Board of Social Services when it comes to people who apply for housing assistance?
Not in any detail, no.
Would you agree with me, though, that in general, someone who is either homeless or facing the potential homelessness, depending on their income level, would determine whether or not they get temporary emergency rental assistance from the county?
Probably yes, I'm not going to say for sure.
In your experience, you have encountered that?
In my experience, there have been a lot of challenges with people trying to use social services as their first line of defense. So I don't know what the challenges specifically are, but I know that we try to help people work through the process and do some mentoring and things like that, because we do know that there are some people that are turned away from social services.
As a pastor, how many times have you been working with this issue of homelessness?
You mean with someone actually showing up at the door of the church, or somebody who's a member, or like coming down here, I mean, what are you asking?
When, when, when you, for lack of a better phrase, have put your personal boots on the ground, do the work to help somebody directly, seek redress for their homeless actually or potential through social services?
How many times have I specifically worked through social services?
In all your years, in all your years?
Me specifically with social services directly? I don't know, probably about 25 times?
The point that I'm trying to get to is that it's concerning that in all your years of doing this work, that you are not intimately familiar with the practices of Board of Social Services, which is the direct, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, typically the direct funding and services source for people facing homelessness, that's been a part of the DCA, excuse me, the Division of Family Development's mission since its inception, I don't know if you know that or not, but that's why it's a concern for me, that's why I'm asking you those questions, that if you don't know that, it's concerning for me, because you're, you are in a capacity with other organizations that are looking for public money, to borrow the phrase you use, duplicate services.
What's the question?
Well, I'm, the question is, I'm asking you about your experience, and how long you've been doing this, and how much personal interaction have you had with clients, connecting them with social services?
And she testified.
They testified to that, the Affordable Housing Agency is working with funding from county Board of Social Services in order to provide the services that we provide at the center. Our role is supportive to that. So my, my activity is to get them connected to coordinated entry.
And your agency is funded, correct?
Not through the county, no.
But your agency is funded?
We're a nonprofit that has to go out there digging for funds like everybody else.
Okay. And, and so when you, when you have been working in collaboration with the county, and there's funding from wherever you're getting from, prior to picking up that ball, you had no real interaction with the Board of Social Services and how they deal with this issue of homelessness?
No.
So you're...
Not in a capacity that you're asking, no.
Can you tell me what capacity then?
Introducing ourselves, being involved with the HPEC organization and that sort of thing, but as far as actually sitting down with clients and connecting people with actual services, no.
Change your direction real quick, and I'm way longer than I thought I was going to be, but I hope this is real quick. When, when you and your agency are working in collaboration, do you have staff that gets paid?
We have one...
Objection. It's way beyond the scope of the directive, and it's irrelevant.
Mr. Chairman, it's a backup organization, I mean, I think you can answer it.
Pastor, if you can answer the question.
We have one contract staff person that's paid by the grant money that we receive as we apply for it and receive it, and she manages the operation, the, our side of the functioning of the housing center.
Thank you.
Mostly directing volunteer.
And I think this might be my last question. To the extent that you know, if this application is granted, will there be any additional funding provided to your agency?
I have no idea.
You have no idea, that hasn't been a discussion with anybody?
It sounds like that was asked and answered, sir.
No idea, gotcha.
All right. One more?
I could.
Yeah, sure. Please give your name and address for the record, please.
Leon Downs, 15 Magnolia Lane, Tom's River, New Jersey.
D-O-W-N-S.
Correct. I just heard you tell them that, you know, you have to struggle for funds like anybody else does. I was wondering, is your organization paying Mr. York?
No.
Is he...
Objection. With all due respect, how I'm paid, who pays me, or if I'm getting paid, is irrelevant and inappropriate.
Chris?
I apologize. I just thought that that might be, since we're talking about public funds, that might be a question that might be relevant.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know that that's really appropriate. I think it's a fair question as to how the, how the, the shelter's going to be funded. But in terms of the professionals, I don't think that that's really appropriate.
Let me ask you, is, it's a grant, we're working under grant monies. Is anyone in your organization writing for these grants?
We have a little bit of help from a volunteer. Most of the time, I'm limited to them.
And do you follow up on these grants? I was asking about AHA, but she didn't testify. So you directly apply for grant money from the county? Does any of that grant money go towards legal fees?
No. As a matter of fact, we don't receive any from the county directly. We never have.
Okay, thank you very much.
Anyone else? Seeing none. Mr. York. Or unless board members, are there any follow-ups?
When the question was brought up as to not applying for a shelter at your facility, you had mentioned that you would be having the same conversation with those neighbors. My question, and I don't know if Mr. York is going to object to this, but is your facility located in a business district or residential district? Or zone, rather? Sorry, not district.
To be perfectly honest with you, I'm not sure what our zoning is. We are located on Hooper Avenue, directly across the street from the elementary, middle school, and the bubble, as it's affectionately known.
And I just looked up, just so this is on the record. Hooper Avenue is a business zone, just so we're all aware.
Any other board members? Seeing none. Mr. York, floor is yours.
I have no further witnesses. We may...
Okay, this is going to be the last question of the evening.
Gerard Madonna, 412 Washington Street.
Spider-Laskey.
M A D O N A, just like the center.
Was it Gerard? I'm sorry, was it Gerard what?
Madonna. Okay, so you mentioned, you used the phrase earlier, non-intentional, or that's what it's intended for. And when you first started speaking, you also were talking about affordable housing that's not here. So how do we know that this is not eventually going to turn into affordable housing?
Because none of us have had that conversation at all.
Well, it's obviously on your mind, though, because you brought it up a couple of times. Don't object.
I'm happy to answer that. There's no, there isn't enough affordable housing for people to go to, but that doesn't mean that the church has any interest that I'm aware of in building affordable housing on their site.
Well, as of now, so what I'm saying is, can you give assurances that that's not going to happen down the line? We're working off of grants here. So from what I've seen my whole 53 years, and I'm sure everybody will agree with me, first, I'm wondering why we're all here, because this seems like more of a formality more than anything. I don't mean any disrespect to anybody. However, how many hundreds of billions of dollars worth of homelessness? And it doesn't help anything. Organizations like yours and the other will make a ton of money, and you run these people through like cattle, and you're standing there, you won't even look at me because it's almost like you couldn't bother being...
Is there a question?
I'm sorry?
Is there a question?
Yeah. Well, why, why on the church grounds? Why not in the empty way, even though the next to the Good Will, if there is a... Why not in the empty animal shelter right next to the police station? Because you can't provide its security. There's no medical staff. Nobody has to be certified in anything. So you're telling us that there's no problem, Mr. Chairman, coming in? And I'm watching on TV, everything, 1,500 droves flying in over the ocean. Nobody knows where they came from, but they're not a threat. I mean, so...
So is...
We don't know anything about these people. We have no answers at all.
All right, sir, sir. I mean, if you want to ask the pastor about anything that she testified to previously, that's, hang on a second, hang on a second. That's fair game, okay? But let's try to kind of confine it to that, okay?
Okay, so I'm just going to say, like I said earlier, we're wondering why we're here, because it doesn't seem like, I mean, these gentlemen passed around pictures before of a homeless person sitting right on the borderline at my friend's house. My husband's at work, she's scared to death. There's another one next to her who lives alone. They're scared to death. And nobody seems to be phased by this at all. No one seems to be wondering about the implications on a residential neighborhood.
I'm going to ask you to cut him off.
Especially when there's no children allowed by the...
This is the opportunity to ask questions. He can make a statement at the end of the hearing and go on till his...
But it's carefully crafted in every single session, so we can't really ask the important questions.
Sir, the answer is, you can ask any question you want.
I'm done.
And you will be given an opportunity...
That's what I said, I'm done. Because again, it's carefully crafted, so we can't really address real concerns here. I live directly across the street. My wife is home alone every day. My neighbor is elderly. Our husband's in a home...
Mr. Chairman, it's enough already.
No, no, this is enough already.
Sir, if you...
We've had it with this. Why are we even here?
Sir, do you have a question?
Not anymore, no. I asked, and I really got a BS answer, like every time.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, this application, I'm just trying to answer that question. This application is for the 17-bed transitional homeless shelter. If it gets approved, and there is a desire for affordable housing in the future, they're going to have to come back, because that's not what this application is for. Understood. Melissa, it sounds like we're coming back.
Tomorrow night?
Absolutely not.
January 23rd.
Okay, January 23rd.
Brian Murphy said he is available to testify.
Yes, he is. We'll have Mr. Murphy on January 23rd.
Okay.
And then the witnesses...
There will be some applications before that, though. This is not going to be the only one on.
So just so the record is clear, this application will be carried to January 23rd. We'll waive the time limitation, and no further notices required.
Real quick, whose cell phone is that? Regardless of who it is, can we turn it off? Thank you. So for the record, the application tonight is being carried to the second meeting of the Board of Adjustment on January 23rd, 2025, at 6:30. This will be the only notice that the public is given.
Thank you.
Applicant weighs the title, will it?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a Merry Christmas.